Good morning. Welcome to the City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our City Council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Batt?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you that you have afforded us the opportunity of life, health, and strength today. We ask for your guidance, your leadership, your wisdom and knowledge as we do the things that you have so assigned to our hands to do. We thank you for what you've already done. We thank you for what you're doing right now. We thank you for what you're going to do. We thank you that Gaston is a better city. We thank you for the things that you are doing to make it better. So we ask you to continue with blessings and strength upon our mayor and those who work in his office and those who work for our city. We ask your blessings upon our city council and the citizens of this city, that your will prevail. We have your faith to call those things that be not as though they were. So we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee, Public Safety Committee, Work Session, and City Council meeting held on September 26. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 22 through the 28.
Sub move.
Sir.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item 7 is preserved for proclamations and commendations. Today, we have one or two, actually. Mayor Ford?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. If the members from Union Baptist Church could please come up, please. We're going to take an offering up when we're done.[191.12][191.12](Laughter). How are you, huh? Good to see y'all. So I have a proclamation from the City of Gaston, and it says, whereas Union Baptist Church was established on October the 20th, 1895, and is one of the oldest churches in Gaston, it was organized under the leadership of Pastor J.S. Simmons, Pastor A.A. Battle of Anniston, Three Deacons, D.B. Horton, Starling Killing, and J.H. Holcomb, Church Clerk Ella Croft, F.H. Kennedy, and 15 courageous Christians. Considering this was a collaborative effort, the group unanimously agreed on the name Union Baptist Church. And whereas, for two and a half years, the congregation worshiped in a hall on Broad Street above Frank Duncan's store until later purchasing a lot in 1898 on South Sixth Street, and a small frame structure was built. In 1907, the small structure was torn down, and a two-story building was completed in 1911. The church went through a renovation before officially settling in the 1960s, where they are currently located on 613 Henry Street. And whereas, Pastor Warren was the first pastor in Gaston to open the doors of Union Baptist Church to lead community meetings in peaceful demonstrations in the fight against injustice. One notable demonstration took place on August the 6th, where the people there were attacked. This terrible event attracted the attention of national leaders like Dr. Martin Luther King, who made a visit to Union Baptist Church and the Gaston community. On December 10th, 2020, Union Baptist Church was listed in the Alabama Register of Landmarks and Heritage for its historical involvement in the American Civil Rights Movement era. And whereas, during the 128 years of the church's existence, there have been 19 ministers to serve and lead the church to new levels. Each pastor that has come through Union Baptist Church made sure to advance the betterment of the church from the adding classrooms, restrooms, Bible studies, senior groups, and even a children's nursery. Under the leadership of current Pastor Ernest Benson, there was a completion of their second building which holds annual events such as Youth Explosion and many more various events. There was also a nonprofit established called Education for Success Foundation. Now therefore, I correct for Mayor Gaston, Alabama, to hereby join the Gaston City Council in proclaiming Sunday, October the 8th, 2023, Union Baptist Church Day. Congratulations.[357.12][357.12](Applause).
Thank you.
Who's district?
District 3.
3? Okay.[369.52][369.52](Laughter).
Kim, three. One, two, one, four. One, two.[375.12][375.12](Laughter). And one, two.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We thank you to the City Council, Gaston City Council, and to the mayor for the proclamation. If you don't know much about the history of Union Baptist Church, it was part of a history in which it took place back in the 40s and 50s. It was when there was a movement of three churches. Union Baptist Church was one of them. St. John C. and me was another. Grant Chapel A. and me was the other. And more than 300 families were removed and from South Side, what was known as South Side, and sent over to the area to what is known as Tuscaloosa Avenue. That's how that community formed, okay? But we thank you for the recognition of what took place, those events that took place, and hopefully that this can be, and even start a conversation in which we can move forward to a better City of Gaston. Amen?
Amen. Thank you.[450.21][450.21](Applause).
So, I want to thank the church for coming, and you know, that's Ms. Mosley's.
No, I didn't recognize her. Yeah, I know all of her children.
Yeah, so thank y'all for coming, and then we're going to recognize...
Right, the Gaston City High School wrestling team, a couple of their team members are here today, and their coach, Josh Nelson, is that right? Josh, would please come forward. Mayor Ford will greet you, and you can bring your two wrestlers with you as well.
Good Lord, you're big. Yeah, I tell you, no wonder you're a wrestling coach. Well, Josh, I'm not going to make you mad.
Do you want to go ahead and wrestle now? Do you want to wrestle now?
No, I'm good. So how much money do you need? Yeah, that's good. So Josh is a wrestling coach, and he and I have been emailing back and forth a lot, and they're trying to raise money for the wrestling team. And he does a great job, and he's really trying to, they just bought some mats, and I know Chief Jaggers, you were involved in the wrestling team at one time, weren't you? And I think the school has bought you some mats, but each child, you can explain that, they had to sell sponsorship packages. He has been recruiting in the middle school already. I read an email this morning, about 3:00 a.m. in the morning, and about what all you've been doing, so we're excited about it, and we're glad to have you here, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to speak. I brought Carter Womack and Justin Campbell, two of my wrestlers. When I took the position, I looked online to try to see what I was getting into before I got into it, and there's not been much attention on wrestling in Gaston, even though Gaston's had a wrestling team for as long as I can remember. It's a sport where one student of a similar size competes against another student, so I believe that's something that many students that are kind of left out of athletics, I believe they can take part in. So I have big goals and aspirations of eventually having youth wrestling and also female wrestling, because the flag football team's doing very well, and I think it would give us more options. I'm here because of, in the past, we didn't have mats, and this is my first year being head coach, or coaching wrestling at the high school. So in the past, they had to borrow mats from other schools, which us being a 6A school, I thought was pretty sad. So that problem's fixed with the help of our awesome athletic directors, Mr. Gullidge and Mr. Blackwell. I've had a lot of help, and so we have that problem. My main concern is transportation. In the past, students, parents have had to take them, and us, you know, being a 6A school, it's pretty, you have to travel pretty good distance, and for some families, that's not possible. And so I believe that's kept children from not being able to participate. Our transportation costs, I've worked for Woods Transportation as well, I've been a teacher in Gaston City School System for 20 years at Striplin Elementary, where I'm still at and will be till I retire. But be working for Woods Transportation with us, with me driving the bus, it's going to cost approximately $6,000 to transport students. And that's the safest form of transportation, is by school bus statistically, and having people take other people's child in their vehicle, to me, that's just, we can't do it. That was my main concern. And my second concern was, we have, I want our students to have what they need to excel, and by my estimations, give or take a few dollars, it's going to cost around $300 per student. And I told the students when we first got started, I do not want any student not to be able to participate because of money. So we're doing discount cards, that's in the works, they should be printed off hopefully this next week, we're doing banners. So before I came here and asked for help, I wanted you to know, I've done everything in my power as an educator and a coach to get what these students need. And every sport's important, and I believe a lot of our students that have been left to athletics will be, have a place, because I'm preaching character and work ethic, and I believe with that, I think we can do well. Back looking towards the future, I need to, we'll be able to house events now at Gaston City, which we were unable to do before, which helped generate money. My main concern is getting through this first year. If we can get through this first year, I guarantee we'll be successful. So I've got a lot of good young men that are working really hard. I went to Litchfield last week, I went to Gaston Middle the week before that, and between those two schools, I have approximately 16 students, 7th and 8th graders, that are going to participate. I'll be going to Emma Sansom when I leave here today to try to get more students. I've had a huge support from female students when wrestling, and I told them, right now it's not available, it'll be something I'm working on, and I think they will be able to participate eventually, hopefully. We're doing the best we can, so.
Do you have anything y'all want to say?
Thanks again, and I appreciate your time.
Here we go. We got one that wants to speak. Yes, sir.
Thank you for having me up here today. The past couple of years, I've wrestled with his son since 7th grade, and I wrestled with him up until 9th grade. Been with him, I've driven him, we've all gone different places together and been in each other's cars, never really had a bus. I think of, I think one time we had a bus, and that was to a hydration test, but we've just lacked, I guess, like people looking in on us and like seeing the sport, like people, like the baseball team got a $5 million field, and we're in a hallway.
Give it to them.[828.82][828.82](Laughter).
Felt like that was a little important for us to have people looking in on us, because we're athletes too, and we care about the sport as much as anybody else cares about their sports. That's about all I have to say.
Well, thank you for coming. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. President, could I ask a question real quick? Could I ask a question to the wrestling coach?
The young man or the coach?
The wrestling coach. Yes, sir. Well, I will say this to the young man, I don't think hydration tests that I took in high school are the same thing he's talking about, but when you say $6,000, that's for the whole season, for the transportation cost for the season?
Yes, sir.
And that's just enough for you to be able to pay for the cost of the bus and the fuel and everything?
Yes, sir, that's me driving it.
And I know you had mentioned doing some discount cards or something, so just to be crystal clear, that is your total need right now, is that $6,000? Or do you anticipate some of these other efforts cutting into that? Or, I know you had mentioned maybe selling banners, I'd love to talk to you about that offline, but what's your total need right now? I guess what I'm asking.
Transportation cost is my main need.
And that's the $6,000?
Yes, sir, because we have, we have singlets, so technically, I don't, I do not want to go into a competition with, being a 6A school, and not be dressed accordingly, or our kids being self-conscious about anything they have, because our students, athletes are just as good, if not better than every other student athlete in the state of Alabama. But that's my main concern. And later on, we're going to do other fundraisers. I've got friends that are, that still fight MMA, and we're thinking about doing like a grappling tournament, which is similar to wrestling, which is like a jujitsu tournament.
Sure.
We're in the works on that. I'm getting it, I've got connections with the state, with Alabama Athletic Committee, good people, and so we've talked about that, so that might be an option. So we're going to be able to generate some, you know, fill the needs that we have, but that's, yes, sir, that's my biggest concern.
That's the median need for this season, and then you think some of this other stuff, you might be able to fund it moving forward, but this...
Yes, sir.
Right on. Well, I support you guys 100%, and even if I didn't, I wouldn't tell you.[963.43][963.43](Laughter). I'm saying, because I wouldn't want to get a bunch of wrestlers after me, but I do support you guys, and I'll try to figure out, we'll all, I'm sure, try to figure out a way that we can help.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it very much. And there's been several businesses, there's too many to name, that were very nice about being on discount cards, because I told them basically, we need some, we need help, and they've been very helpful, so. And several businesses that you would not think would be as helpful, you know, chain restaurants and stuff, they've been the most supportive, actually.
Well, again, I'll just say this to drive the point home, if you came into my business and asked me to help, I'd help too.[1004.32][1004.32](Laughter).
That's right, that's, and I spoke with, and I've already, I'm...
Ms. Hyatt, Elizabeth Hyatt.
Yeah, Ms. Hyatt, yeah, right, and your son spoke, and so she called me the other day, she's in my district, and we had a very nice conversation, and I was very moved by them. You know what really inspired me? They're already working. These folks have been working, and in that conversation, you know, I came up with an idea, I said, you know, there's a lot of ex-wrestlers, high school wrestlers in Gaston that probably would help if they just knew that they would help. So I told Ms. Hyatt that I would sponsor her son, I think it's, and I, our conversation was $200, but I have a personal check, not a city check, a personal check for $200 for your son, to sponsor him for the year, and I'm encouraging, as a challenge, if you're, and I didn't wrestle in high school, I played football and basketball and golf, but I was too scared to wrestle, but I want to start that, we need to step up as a community. If you're a wrestler, or you had a brother, or whoever, step up and sponsor one of these wrestlers. So I'm going to, I want to give you this check before you, and Mayor, I know you've got something to say.
Yeah, so I just, he wanted me to reiterate, and I know the school board and the principal, I talked to Mr. Blackwell today, they're doing everything they can do, and with a 6A school, we have a lot of athletics, and I see one of our school board members here today, and we're glad to have her, Ms. Smith. But we know that, he said they're having to practice in the hall, so I want just to reiterate that, and what we can do to help you. One thing the president is doing in the council is trying to bring one sport to come to the council meetings.
We have a building now.
And you do have a building, okay.
Thanks, dude.
And we want to thank you, Coach. I coached all my life. It's hard to find coaches, because coaches don't get paid hardly anything. I know that from coaching high school sports myself, and you do it for the love of the kids, and for the kids, we want to thank you for coming out, because wrestling does teach a lot of character. Toby Rawls was a friend of mine, he's a wrestler from South Side, and I coached his kid, Hayden, and he was a good wrestler too. But the mayor's office has a check for you upstairs too, and you're welcome to go by the second floor and see Ms. Brittany, and she'll have it ready for you too. So we're supporting y'all for $1,000, and I know everybody else will too, so we just want to tell you how much we appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Nice.
You need a picture?
Sure. Y'all want, y'all want?
Yeah, you want to bring them up here?
Yeah.
I don't know, right?[1161.15][1161.15](Laughter).
Josh, I apologize, man, I didn't know that you had a name. Appreciate it, now we know.
Sure. Oh, yeah, do you want to, are they still here?
Is you in the church?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
Mayor, can I take a picture with that board member?
Mayor?
Can I take a picture with that board member right there? I'm just...
She said to fix your car. Tuck it in there.
I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
Hey, he's got to go home tonight at some point, doesn't he?
Yeah.
We do need to recognize her, though. Do you want to do that?
No, I'd rather you do it.
All right, I'll be glad. Anytime we have somebody like that, I want to recognize them. I didn't notice that you came in.
She doesn't know you're here. She hasn't been here.
Okay.
Hey, Ms. Mosley. Hey, Ms. Mosley.
Good to see you. Look at these, y'all look like twins.
They're still dressing like everybody.
Yeah, they're great.
All right, here we go. Count three. One, two, three. We get one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.[1297.15][1297.15](Applause).
Thank you, sir.
How you doing, sir?
Thank you so much.
I know, but you don't get to do that. You're front and center on the recording.
That's right.
We put a, we like to put our strongest members up front to project...
Well, we're going for looks.
Yeah, an image of power and authority.
All right, well, thank y'all very much. That's, Mayor Ford, thank you for handling that. Sure, very good.
All right, we will move to the next item, which is item 8. It comes under unfinished business. This 8A is an ordinance amending ordinance number 0-47-23 regarding managed care of dogs and cats. This ordinance was tabled for two weeks on September 19th. It requires owners to register and obtain licenses for dogs and cats over six months of age, establishes a permit for commercial breeders, and fines for owners of dogs or cats captured at large that are unlicensed or have expired licenses. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask that we table this for seven days. We had a very, very productive public safety meeting last week with several concerned members of the community and the animal control community at large, and got some great feedback and made some last-minute kind of tweaks and adjustments, and we're still waiting for all that language to be finalized and formalized into the ordinance. So if y'all don't mind just giving us seven more days, and we'll be ready to move on this.
Okay, there's a motion to table this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for seven days, I mean, I'm sorry, the ordinance for seven days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Okay, then we'll move to item 8B. This is an ordinance rezoning 1203 Gardner Street from B2 General Business District to R1 One Family Residence District. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The owner stated that the general business zoning was to accommodate a hair salon that has since been located to another area and would like to have the property rezoned for use as residential rental property. The planning commission recommended approval with seven voting in favor and one abstention. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Sub move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8C is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property at the Air Depot. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. Creek Ridge Properties LLC has offered to pay $500,000 for building T1 and T2. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Sub move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8C is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property at the Air Depot. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. Creek Ridge Properties LLC has offered to pay $500,000 for building T1 and T2. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Sub move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8C is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property at the Air Depot. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. Creek Ridge Properties LLC has offered to pay $500,000 for building T1 and T2. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Sub move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 9 is a resolution awarding bid number 3527 for vehicle filters, auto, and heavy truck. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Tractor and Equipment Company, and the amount is $23,128.11. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Sub, second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution amending rules of procedure for council business. This changes council procedure regarding public speaking and work sessions. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to substitute Resolution 731 for 731.1.
All right, there's a motion for, to substitute.
Second.
Second, all right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to substitute the alternate resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to substitute the .1.
All right.
And then I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 731-1, amending the rules of procedure for council business.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second? There's a second? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution as substituted, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call vote?
Probably so, I guess so.
Is it going to like to ask for that, Mr. President?
I don't think it would be. I think it would be proper to have a roll call vote.
Okay. Councilwoman Latham?
No.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilman Batt?
No.
Councilman Wilson?
No.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
No.
Motion does not carry to adopt.
All right, item 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Greater Gaston Housing Authority. This continues the community-oriented policing program in the public housing communities for fiscal year 2024. The city will be reimbursed for the hourly rate of the officers. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Sub move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 comes under first reading. It's an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property at 513 Henry Street. This is to convey property to the Gaston-Etowol County Progress Council in regard to its Head Start facility. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 13 is for new business. Do we have any new business today?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one piece that's routed to us from the legal department,
Item thirteen is for new business. Do we have any new business today?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I have one piece that's, uh, routed to us from the legal department. Um, resolution seven-three-three authorizing subordination agreement. Um, essentially, I'll, I'll try to be as brief as I can with this. For those of you that aren't aware, we had made a deal to sell some property uh, to the Alabama Cancer Center, and if some of you may have noticed that there, that, that facility is under construction right now. Uh, just as you head down, uh, first here towards Riverview Medical Center, you can see the construction there on the right, or I mean, on the left. Um, essentially what this is, is the Cancer Center went back to their financial institution to request a mortgage, a loan, to finish building the property, and the financial institution basically said that the city of Gadsden had done too good of a job with the way we wrote the contract that said if they didn't do what they said they were gonna do, or if they didn't continue to operate for a certain amount of years, that we could just buy the property back from them sight unseen, no questions asked. Well, obviously, if the bank's gonna loan them money, they wanna know that if they go bankrupt, that the bank can sell the property. So we had to go back and change our agreement to say, okay, if they still owe the bank money, then the bank can sell the property for what the, what the Cancer Center owes them. But if they don't owe the bank money, then again, we get to buy the property back. And the idea is that we get to, we're very protective of our riverfront property. Um, you, you don't wanna just give that land away because they're not making any more dirt. You know, that's, that's all the land we've got, and that's all the riverfront property we've got. So anytime we make a deal like that, we always put that language in there that says if something goes wrong, we can buy the land back from the city can. And so all we're doing now is just carving out the language to allow the bank to be able to sell the property if, if they were to go into bankruptcy. So, um, this, this subordination agreement is just that. It just says the bank gets first dibs at it if they still owe the bank money. So with that in mind, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business as, uh, as the construction project is literally ongoing, and this is put it to a standstill until we, until we resolve this, so.
All right, there's a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Councilwoman Latham, all right. Uh, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, seeing no other new business, we'll move to item fourteen on our agenda. This is department reports, committees, and boards. I know we have one. We have Craig Scott from the library along with Darlene Harkrow. They're gonna talk about Community Thanksgiving at the venue.
Good morning, council and mayor. We thank you for allowing us to come today to speak to you on behalf of Community Thanksgiving. I am Darlene Harkrow, and of course Craig Scott here for, we're on the board of Community Thanksgiving. Um, we've come again today to ask you for your assistance considering it's that time of year. We've been hard at it, trying to make sure things happening all year long, but now we're down to the wire because we're in October. So with that being said, we're asking again for, for your assistance in helping with that because of the cost of food. Our budget is forty thousand dollars this year because of the cost of food and then some unseen, um, some unforeseen circumstances for some expenses. Um, most of you know about Community Thanksgiving. We've been around for, just with the, when, um, they started in the late nineties. New Liberty Tabernacle of Praise did, and they started with the heart of saying, um, we're gonna feed our shut-ins and we're gonna feed the homeless. Community Thanksgiving has become so much more than that. We now, not only do we still continue to do the shut-ins and the homeless, now we do people who are alone for Thanksgiving as well as families, because the cost to, to provide one meal that, that large for families with the cost of groceries has become astronomical. So we open up our doors to say, you know what, you come together as a community. Let's feed this community. Let's feed the ones who are less fortunate and then be a family together, because what we wanna do, our, our slogan for Community Thanksgiving is a community coming together for faith, food, and fellowship. Our heart, again, is about creating that heart of, or that atmosphere of grandmamas to come home and to be able to be loved on and to be fed. So that's our heart for Community Thanksgiving. We want you to come on a board with us. We encourage you again that, of course, to help us along with the funding, but also to come, because if you can't come on Thursday because your family is, is having a big day, that's fine. But make sure you come on a Monday or Tuesday, because we vamp up on Monday morning, and we don't stop until Thursday afternoon when we're all like, our eyes are bugging out of here because we're exhausted. So, so definitely an experience. We walk away knowing that we have changed and we have worked along with a community that just needed to feel needed, and that's what our heart for Community Thanksgiving is. Again, I wanna thank you very much, um, and I wanna thank you ones who have participated in a coming and then also for donating. So thank you again so very much.
Did you say what time it was?
Um, oh, we're, of course, Monday, uh, we do times from eight to four, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday is eight to four. The day of Thanksgiving, they get there at five o'clock in the morning, um, and then we usually, um, start cleanup about two. And so we're usually out of the venue by about four-thirty or five.
What time for the feeding for the public?
For the feeding of the public is from ten to two for dining in. Uh, we've changed those times a little bit for to go, those are now from, from nine-thirty to twelve, and then for the delivery, of course, is from eight-thirty still until twelve-thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to add a couple more sentences to what Darlene said, it's the biggest Thanksgiving dinner in Alabama, all right? That brings a huge spotlight on Gadsden and, and Edoaw County. So we ask for you to volunteer, help us, like she said, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, chop some celery for us, uh, some onions, and, uh, if you can't help on Thursday, Thursday we'll put you on the line, making, making those meals, and we, we send out a bunch of meals. Eight thousand we're expecting, uh, this year. So, thanks for your help.
Well, thank y'all. Thank you very much. I think I see Pastor Simmons back there. I wanna thank you for all the years that you've done. You see what you started?
Yeah.
Amen. Amen. But thankful that there's great folks to come behind you to, to pick up that, that mantle. It's, it's a wonderful thing. It's, uh, we try to help every year during the week, and, and to do it, it's, it's really a joy to, to serve, and thank you, Darlene, and, and Craig, for, for, for what y'all do.
Best thing I'm here...
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to highlight that, uh, Pastor Simmons, again, thank you so much. And Ms. Harkrow mentioned you earlier today. I know she mentioned New Liberty, but I wanna just mention the visionary of New Liberty, and thank you for those efforts, and also kind of piggyback off of that. I know you've been communicating with the mayor, um, and sometimes we wait till things get big to get on board. So my point is, he's working on another project now, like he did the food project years ago, to United Way had to take it over now. The Thanksgiving committee's takes, is taking it over, but the program he's working on now would take a lot of pressure off of the success center and the people sleeping over there behind, even start school and all these broads. So let's just remember the work that he's doing actively right now, knocked a hole in that wall, working on that building at the corner of Hope in East Broad, because it's also gonna turn into a hub, eventually what people can go to, to get baths, to get showers, to get meals, and things like that. So thank you in advance, because we already see where that's headed.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Smith, and thank you, Reverend Simmons.
All right, we'll move on to the next item. This is citizen request to speak. I'd like to welcome Noah Meredith to the podium. Uh, personal note of privilege, I go to church with Noah and his family, and, uh, very proud of Noah. He's working on, I found out, he's working on his Eagle Scout badge, which he's gonna tell us about. I made an introduction, uh, to Shari Bostic with Noah, with all of her work that she's done years at Southern Hill Cemetery. I thought it would be a, a great partnership, and, and they have become fast friends. So Noah, thank you for being here. Thank you for your dedication to your, your, to being a Boy Scout and then to your Eagle Scout. So tell us about this project that you're doing.
Okay, so first I would like to thank you for allowing me to share with you about my Eagle Scout project. In my opinion, it's a very special community project for the city of Gadsden. My name is Noah Meredith. I'm in the tenth grade at Westbrook Christian School. I'm also a Boy Scout in troop one fifty-one at Southside, Alabama. For my Eagle Scout project, I've chosen to make a hundred headstone bases for Southern Hill Cemetery, also known as Sixth Street Cemetery. The cemetery was founded in eighteen twenty-six, and over the years, the graves have deteriorated, and many of the headstones have become lost, and these one hundred headstone bases will be used to mark graves that are currently unmarked. My workdays at the cemetery will be Saturday, October twenty-first, and Saturday, October twenty-eighth, and both days will start at nine AM. The first day, we'll be setting out forms and prepping to pour the concrete, and on the second day, we will be pouring the concrete to actually make the bases. This is a big project, and I would love for anyone who's interested to please come out and help. I hope the community will want to get involved to help Southern Hill Cemetery. We're also still looking for sponsors and would be happy to accept any donations to go towards this project. And we would hope the city of Gadsden will come together for this project to honor the people who are buried in Southern Hill Cemetery, because their lives mattered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Shari Bostic, Director of Grace Heritage, uh, Community Development, and we have been, um, involved in a restorative effort to, uh, restore the cemetery, uh, to its former glory, so that, uh, those people can be recognized and honored, um, in, in history of Gadsden. I am very, um, proud of Noah for taking on this project. I have been, um, giving him an opportunity to be the foreperson on this project, to give me his ideas rather than me taking on the responsibility of, of taking over his project. I want him to be aware of all the history and all the things that we are working on at Southern Hill, so he can be proud of the project that he puts forth.
Thank you very much for your leadership there. Thank you, Noah. Am I got any questions or anything?
Yeah, Mr. President, if I could...
Please, yeah, that's in your district, that's right. Yeah, Councilman Wilson.
Uh, no, I wanna thank you personally. That's been a, a project that's been very near and dear to me since I came on the council five years ago. Ms. Bostic and so many other volunteers spend hours and hours and hours up there, uh, trying to right a tremendous wrong in this community, um, that, that goes on to this day, in my opinion. I, um, so I can't tell you how much it means to me that you chose that project. I think it's something that you're gonna value for the rest of your life. I think you'll be able to look back on this long into the future and, and be proud of what you're, what you're setting out to do right now. And, and in general, as an Eagle Scout, I can tell you, the most honorable man in my life is an Eagle Scout, best person I've ever met in my life, hands down. And I'll tell you a quick story. There was a, a professor, a book of mine that I really enjoyed, uh, that I read years ago, um, by a professor at Carnegie Mellon in the Computer Science Program named Randy Pausch. Um, he wrote a book, actually gave a lecture, and it later became a book, um, called The Last Lecture. He was diagnosed with terminal cancer, uh, and given a year to live, and so he gave this wonderful lecture about how to achieve your childhood dreams, and it became very popular, New York Times bestseller book. I mean, it's very popular. But in the book, he talks about in the early seventies when the computer science program was first developing, and he was getting bombarded with applications into the program there at Carnegie Mellon University. And he said, "The one thing that is still relevant on your resume forty years after you accomplish it is being an Eagle Scout." And it guaranteed, anybody who applied to the program, if he saw that they were an Eagle Scout, it guaranteed them a face-to-face interview. And he said he held that standard throughout his entire academic career as a professor. So I applaud you. I know the hard work it takes to get all those badges on that sash. I know how you have to overcome stuff that a lot of young kids wouldn't do, like wearing that uniform to school every now and then as part of that progression to Eagle Scout. And I'm telling you, the sacrifice you've made is gonna be something that'll pay dividends for you for a long, long time, man. So congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Anybody else? All right, we'll move to remarks by mayor and council. Mayor Ford? Thank you. Uh, I wanna just announce a few things that we had going on this last week. If you've noticed, we're currently clearing the trees along Riverview Hospital around the pond. Uh, we started that project back. Uh, we will, it'll be a project that'll take some time as we go down Rainbow Drive and along seven fifty-nine, uh, but we're, we're doing it one tree at a time. Uh, we wanna thank you to Renew Our Rivers and also Gadtoberfest is this Saturday from three to nine downtown Gadsden.
That was last Saturday?
It was last Saturday. I was just making sure you were awake. Yeah, so it's all right. It's been a long day. Uh, last, is the last first Friday this Friday?
Yeah, it's the last first Friday.
Okay. So the last first Friday is this Friday downtown Gadsden. Uh, but thank you for reminding me of that.
We can also make that a Gadtoberfest if you want to.
Yeah, we can do it again.
Let's have another one.
Let's just relive it. Uh, so I wanna talk about, we did go to DC to let the council and the public know. We met with Senator Tuberville, uh, Congressman Aderholt, Congressman Rogers' office, Congressman Strong's office, Senator Britt's office, DOT, ARC, and many other agencies. Got great results, uh, great commitments. Uh, we don't wanna announce them yet, uh, because we wanna get through this budget, but by them continuing the CR for forty-five more days allowed our previous line items, uh, high probability of getting in the budget. So we're very excited about that. We also met with DOT yesterday and, uh, Volker Construction about the relocation of four eleven and the Eastern Connector, and things are moving forward quite nicely, so we're very excited about that. And if you'll allow me to excuse myself, we're meeting with possibly a new buyer of the steel mill, so, thank you. Sure. Thank you, Mayor Ford. Sounds really good. Appreciate your travels and the hard work. I know you took some folks with you, and I know y'all will see some fruit from that.
We did, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Latham?
I don't have any comments.
No comments, all right. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just wanna say to Noah again, congratulations. Uh, thank you, Ms. Bostic, for your work with the cemetery. We appreciate that. Congratulations to New, um, Union Baptist and the representatives that were here today as well. Just wanna actually continue prayers for the council and for our mayor, as, uh, we continue to try to lead the city and do it in a way that'll be pleasing unto God, first of all. I know we never gonna make all the constituents happy, but just continue to lift us up in prayer sometimes. We appreciate that. So thank you, Ms. Harkrow, for all that you shared. Again, Pastor Simmons, thank you for being the progenitor, uh, of that, the trailblazer behind this enormous feeding that we have at Thanksgiving, and we look forward to working with you, excuse me, on your new program. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything, Mr. President.
All right, Councilwoman Monatra?
Um, I'd just like to, um, encourage everyone, this is the October Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we just wanna encourage you to take advantage of the opportunity to save your life, and that is having a mammogram. And I would also like to just recognize the Theater of Gadsden and the Ritz Theater, because this weekend, they will perform Anne of Green Gables, and on Saturday, there will be a showing at two and eight, and on Sunday, a show at two. So thanks for your support in Alabama City.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanna, nobody here is from Public Works, but they are up at District Seven knocking it out. Uh, I think in a couple of days, we won't even realize a storm came through there two months ago, but it's, uh, looking back the way it's supposed to look, and everybody's happy, and everybody is telling me that the Public Works are doing a great job, and they're actually getting out there and, and picking every little single twig up and making it look real nice. Also, I would like to, uh, thank, this past weekend, uh, the Barefoot University Homeschool Group, uh, went up to Knocklough Falls, and they did. It was a, a group of kids and, and parents, and they did a lot of cleanup and pulling up weeds and just doing all kind of stuff like that to make the park more beautiful and keeping it beautiful. That's all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to first, uh, we need to, I'd like to recognize, uh, Gadsden City School Board member, Ms. Rita Smith, that has joined us this morning. Thank you for being here, uh, Ms. Rita. We're, we're glad to have you. Somebody's gotta be here to keep Councilman Smith in line, so we're glad you're here. And thank you for, for, for your service at, at our Board of Education. Uh, I wanna recognize also my youth pastor, Cole Jordan is in the, in the room. He's here to support Noah Meredith. Thank you, Cole, for being here and for all the things that you do for all of our youth, not only at our church, but just for all over. Thank you very much. Uh, pink garbage cans. I appreciate Councilwoman Monatra bringing that up. Last year, we instituted pink garbage cans for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. They are for sale. You have to purchase those. They're ninety dollars, if I remember correct, and I'm kicking myself for not having a pink garbage can over there with that big pink sign, but I promise you, good Lord willing, and the creek does not rise, we'll have that here next week for this whole month. So thank you, Councilwoman Monatra, for bringing that up. Uh, they're ninety dollars. They belong to you, and they work just like the regular black garbage cans, and it looks great on our streets, and some people are buying them in memory of a family member or in honor of a family member. I bought one in honor of my wife, who is a breast cancer survivor. So I encourage y'all to consider purchasing a pink garbage can, and you can do that at our garbage department, which is on the first floor of City Hall. You walk in through the main entrance, there's a bunch of signs that says garbage with the arrow pointing to the right, and that's where you go to get your can. That being said, if no others to be brought before, we stand adjourned. Thank you. Have a good day.